Welcome to another show of Your Town. Stanley Mickelson, Select Board Member, Dartmouth, Massachusetts. I have a panel of people that we've -- that were working with myself and Chris Micho, the Board of Health, to present to town meeting in the spring, a thin film plastic bag bylaw. I have before us today the panel of David Tattelbaum, newly-elected Select Board Member and business owner, Jamie Jacqua, UMass Dartmouth, Carrie Hawthorne, Buttonwood Park Zoo, Chris Micho, Director of Board of Health, and Scott Alfons, Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge District. So briefly, I think we're gonna just, at this point, just go over a few major issues of the proposals of the bylaw. And I'd like, Chris, to just to highlight a few, and later on in the show, we'll get involved in a little more in-depth in this proposed plastic bag bylaw.
Sure. Thank you. So the Spring Town Meeting of 2018, there will be an article appearing before the town meeting that's going to propose banning certain plastic bags at certain locations. You know, many of us know these bags. We get them at a lot of our retailers. This is one of them here. They're thin-film bags. We'll talk later in the show about why this bylaw is of interest to the town and how the bylaw will impact the retailers in town and the consumers as well. There are a lot of thresholds in this article so that, you know, we don't impact, you know, really small businesses and that, you know, that there are other bags that are allowed.
So what Mr. Micho is talking about, I'll just go over a few highlights of the proposed -- it's actually, it's a general bylaw in the Article 76, which is what will be before town meeting. So it is a general bylaw. Only applies to retailers with gross building floor area of 5,000 square feet that provide plastic bags with thickness of less than 1 mil. Obviously does not apply to the stores that are less than 5,000. It only applies to the bagging of proposed purchases on merchandise. Some of the bags that will not be affected, like sandwich bags, large trash bags, liners, large trash liners, so that won't be affected. But it will, but it does apply to bags provided at any retailer for bulk or specialty items like meat, seafood, produce, bakery products, flowers, potting plants, newspapers, magazines, and other periodics. So it's a wide variety. We do understand that, and we'll talk about it later, that the biggest impact is as what most people will see at any supermarket at the end of the checkout, those particular bags. And those are the bags that we see everywhere, on the side of our roads, in our trees, in our waterways, everywhere, destroying the environment. And I think everyone that's listening to this program, watching this program today, understands the impact of what these bags, these specific bags do to our town and our country and the world. So Carrie, I'd like you to pick up on that if you don't mind, and as, again, representing the New -- Buttonwood Park Zoo. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so at the zoo, we are really focused on environmental impacts, especially as it relates to our wildlife here in New England and around the world. And plastic bags are a huge impact, especially to our ocean animals. Over 100,000 marine animals die every year from ingesting these plastics. I think the latest number is somewhere around 44% of seabirds at some point in time have ingested plastic. A lot of people don't realize the wildlife we have right off our own coasts, like sea turtles and seals and the fish through our fishing industry. These plastic bags, they never go away. They take millions of years, and when they do degrade, they just degrade into smaller and smaller pieces. And the wildlife ingests those small pieces, and it ends up in their systems, which can in turn end up in us when we eat that fish that has been, you know, gorging on plastic. So it's definitely out there. It's a problem, and between entanglement and ingestion, it's big for everything from fish to birds to mammals and everyone in between.
Thank you. Mr. Alfons, how does it affect our Refuge District?
So the Greater New Bedford Regional Refuge District operates Crapo Hill Landfill, which is the solid waste disposal facility for the town of Dartmouth. Anytime we can remove anything from the waste stream, it's a benefit to the town. It helps us preserve our landfill capacity for future generations and reduce costs. From an operational standpoint, the bags do generate a certain nuisance at the landfill. They are lightweight, as Chris demonstrated. They become airborne when they're disposed of at the landfill. They get tangled in trees, and as Carrie mentioned, they are also a threat to wildlife at the landfill. We've seen bird entanglements on certain occasions. So anytime we can get these bags out of the waste stream, it's gonna benefit the operation as well, too. There is a cost associated with removing litter that becomes windblown at the landfill, and removing that litter does also present certain risks to personnel. These bags are often in treetops, require man lifts, they have to get to certain heights to remove them from the trees. So we would like to see these reduced from the waste stream.
By all means, for sure. Save all of us a little bit of issues that -- so Jamie, maybe you can add a little something to this discussion, representing the college, UMass Dartmouth, and what you can help us do as a town, working hand-in-hand with the university, which is very important for us to do that.
So again, as another sort of mini-community within the larger community, we realize that our students do a lot of shopping within the area, but we also know that our students, like most of us, have access to these reusable bags. The thin-film bags that we're talking about are really designed for just one-time use only, and we know that about 99% of those end up not getting recycled. They end up just getting thrown away. I know some people try to reuse them, whether it's trying to do it for cat litter or you're picking them after their dogs, but that's a really small percentage of the overall bags that get used, and students are a part of that. So we're trying to make sure that our students have access to reusable bags. I think all of us have them in the trunk of our car and our front closets, and that's an important part of changing those behaviors, that we already have the tools at our disposal, we just need to be able to utilize those a little bit more.
Yes. So Mr. Tattelbaum, maybe you can bring us up to speed in what you're doing at your business at Big Value?
Thanks, Stan. I appreciate, I know you and Chris have led the charge in getting this thing going, and we, as a small retailer, family-owned here in town, it's really, we think it's important for us to participate. We want to offer the transition to our customers to make it easy and simple, but end up with them reusing bags. We're gonna put together a program, we're gonna have a jump-off period starting on Earth Day, the weekend of April 21, '22, as a trial basis. We're gonna make cardboard boxes available that people can use going forward from there as opposed to bags. We have our own bags, everybody has them, but we even have these reusable bags, and we're making them available for sale, but we're also gonna start having promotions where you buy X amount of stuff and we give them to you for free because we've done it a couple times, and people are really interested in it. We want to try to build up a protocol for making this thing work and the transition involving the zoo and the kids at the zoo and in the university so that we can then go forward and offer other retailers in town some of the successes we've had so they can help make their transition even easier. The end result is that we're gonna get rid of these bags, and we make it a community-wide thing, where it feels good to do it as opposed to just mandating it. We're better than that, the town of Dartmouth's better than that. We don't need just a mandate. I think it's important to make people feel like they're contributing to the total package, and we're happy to be a part of that program.
And I think they'll buy into it.
I do, too.
I truly, I think everyone, I can't see anyone that could say no to this proposed restriction. It makes no sense to me. I was at a home show in Rhode Island, the Civic Center, and over the weekend, we had a large home show, and there were tens of thousands of people. One of the, one of the most, I would say, in all the years I've been doing this, probably the best year we've ever had. I think the weather helped and all that, but talking about companies that are buying into this program, so they're in Providence, Rhode Island, the Civic Center, obviously. I think we've all seen these, if you go to this store. They had to, without an exaggeration, had to have at least 10,000 of these bags for free to hand out to their customers, our prospective customers, but more importantly, to the people that live in Providence, Rhode Island. And they're, they bought into this program, obviously, and I think the few supermarkets that are in town and one that's on the border will buy into this program also. They're the same company, and there's another company, another larger supermarket. They're well-prepared, well-prepared to transition from plastic to this. They've done it in 65-plus other cities and towns in the state of Massachusetts. So this is not a hard sell to the larger stores. Even the big boxes are not a hard sell to them either. The selling point will be to the smaller stores. If you're under 5,000 square feet, that won't be part of it. You will not be involved in it. But there will be a few independents that are larger, like yourself, and thank you for what you're doing in advance. And Dave and I have been friends for a long time, and I hadn't talked to Dave about this plastic bag issue until Chris and I were, just had a few meetings, and we finally got this thing off the ground. We have a committee, and that's when you told me, and I was, really, I was very surprised and pleasantly surprised. And there'll be more and more Dave Tattelbaums in Big Values that will do the same thing in this town. There's no question about it.
Stanley, I think one of the things important for our smaller retailers and sort of mom-and-pop shops here in town, that this may be affecting those stores over 5,000 square feet, is that all of them are paying for their plastic bags right now. You know, they're paying in the order of 2 or 3 cents per bag that goes out. And so for those retailers to not be giving those bags away for free, it's actually going to be a benefit to them financially.
That's why they did it.
Correct. So having those reusable bags or just not having bags available that are on paper reduces their expenses as well as being good for the environment. And again, I think, you know, the point we had drawn earlier, that so many people already have these reusable bags as a part of their sort of toolkit.
Sure.
Existing already. We just need to get into better practice of, I need to bring it into the mall with me, I need to bring it into that store each time, I need to make sure I get it from the hall closet into the vehicle, you know, so that I can bring it with me to the store.
We're all creatures of habit.
Exactly.
Truthfully, and it takes very little time to fall into that category.
Individually, as a consumer, I find the plastic bags to be a nuisance, and we converted over to the canvas bags a long time ago because you put them in the back of the car or the SUV or the truck, whatever, and you go around one bend, and next thing you know, if there's anything round in there, it's rolling all over the place, and then you have to re-bag your groceries, you know, when you get home.
And then the plastic bag falls off, flies away off the back of your truck.
And they're so small now and so thin-film, they don't carry anything, so you end up with far more bags than you need, and you can reduce the amount of trips back and forth to your car with those larger reusable bags.
It's just a good practice, and again, creatures of habit, we are human beings, very much so. So David?
I might add that I know smaller retailers, purchasing these bags at a good price is difficult because it's based on volume pricing. My, based on my own personal experience and manufacturers who make for the larger retailers, and I think that we're gonna try very hard to make these bags available at a reasonable price in some kind of generic message form that we can then dole out to the smaller retailers so they can be competitive and not have to pay a lot of money to have those bags available. So that would be a nice transition for them as well. Gonna work out the mechanics for that, but I think it's easy enough to do.
With the help of some local businesses, I'd like to see also, maybe they could contribute some cash, to have some bags made with a Dartmouth logo on it, and we could hand them out to various locations at town hall and similar places to be picked up at no charge. So I'm looking to any large business owner or a small business owner or even a resident that would like to contribute to this program, to make our lives and your children and grandchildren's lives safer health-wise. So you know where to get ahold of me.
Just another, to carry on to what Scott was mentioning about the solid waste impacts in Massachusetts with these plastic bags. Massachusetts, a number of years ago, they've been trying to preserve solid waste capacity in the state, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, so they create waste bans. One of the first waste bans I believe that they created was on the white goods, which is your refrigerators, your washing machines, very easily recyclable. More recently, they instituted an organics ban, and in the organics ban, one of the first organics that they banned from solid waste disposal was leaf and yard waste. The leaf and yard waste gets diverted to compost sites, and unfortunately, the compost sites are not just receiving organic material, infusing that organic material oftentimes are these plastic bags. When people are raking up their lawns in urban areas, the bags coming, they're not getting segregated out, they're getting mixed in with it, they go to the, they go to the compost facility, the compost breaks down, and when they screen the compost, the bags get diverted off into a, what they call a tailings pile. So now you have a pile of rocks and heavy wood and plastic, and you can't do anything with that pile. So you take a small amount of bags, and when you screen that out of the compost, you end up with a tailings pile that could be, you know, depending upon the volume, but it's usually anywhere from 50 to a few hundred yards, and you can't do anything with it. So you've created actually a larger volume of solid waste from de minimis amounts of plastic bags in those tailings.
Stanley, Chris brings up a good point as far as some of the challenges that plastic bags present to recycling programs in general. And in the town of Dartmouth, one of the biggest contaminants that we see in the curbside recycling program is plastic bags. Residents often bag their recyclables and think that they're actually doing a service when in fact that those bags do create a certain nuisance for the recycling program. They create problems in the sorting of the material, and the plastic bags oftentimes get tangled in machinery that's used to sort recyclables. They also--
And that means there's a shutdown of the machinery.
Right, shutdown of the machinery.
Pull all the plastic bags out or whatever's, whatever's entangled.
Yes.
And so that's time-consuming, costs money.
Yeah. And again, you know, it does present a certain risk to workers. Everyone deserves a safe workplace. So it is, it's definitely one of the biggest problems. The town recently received a grant valued at $40,000 from Mass Department of Environmental Protection. It's called the Recycling IQ. It's to improve quality. IQ stands for improved quality. And one of the targets of this program will be to remove plastic bags from the curbside program. So, you know, we're hopeful that this will certainly help us improve the quality. It's even more important now, most of our plastics are recycled overseas, mostly in China, and last year, China instituted what they call the National Sword Initiative, which has placed strict limits on the amount of contaminants that can be in plastics that are sent overseas for recycling. So we want to make sure that the town produces high-quality recyclable material, and getting plastic bags out of the recycling stream is certainly one of the steps.
It's just more money in the till for us.
Yes.
Yeah. David?
Stanley, there's no doubt that within some time period, the state will pass its ban as well, but there is no reason for us to wait. Who knows, that could be a year, two years, three years, doesn't matter. We need to do, this initiative is a proud town to do the right way, in a way that is comfortable for our residents as well, and offer them alternatives as opposed to just say, okay, tomorrow morning, we're no plastic bags, and the compliance will be difficult and be cumbersome, but in this case, we can roll it out with lots of benefits and it was with a lot of ease, and I think we're ready for it. The recycling program in town has been a fantastic success. People embrace it well.
Sure has.
And from day one, it was, and I think we can do this just as well.
I believe that's what will happen, but we can't be so sure. So we really need, that's why we're having this program today. We're kicking this off. We wanna, we wanna let everybody know how successful we feel it will be, but in the meantime, we want to make sure that if there are questions, that the questions have to be asked. And they're in this general bylaw. I'd like to go over a few others. I'll give everybody, Chris, I'd let you expound on a little bit more of the bylaw. I mean, I have it in front of you, but you probably haven't memorized.
So it's a simple, it's really a simple bylaw because it gets into, you know, a few components, and that's it. It's, if, you know, you're captured by it or not, 5,000 square feet. So that's the targets, the Walbots, the Walgreens. It's not your really small--
What size is 5,000 square feet, would you say?
50 by 100, just, and it doesn't include out--
Well, an example, I think that's what you're looking for.
The Cumberland Farms on Route 6. It would not include a subway.
Right.
Other items that will not be included, so when you go to Shaw's and you're buying produce, those individual bags that you grab to put your peppers or your cucumbers in, those are excluded. Newspapers, the bags--
Drying bags, not included.
Not included.
Right.
And then it gets into the thickness of the bag, and you know, one thing that some people may have a hard time trying to quantify or, you know, make tangible is what is a mil. A mil is 1/1,000 of an inch, and so that we can try to figure out what is, still, what is 1/1,000 of an inch? A credit card is 30 mils. So if you lay your credit card down and look at it, that's 30 mils. Home Saran Wrap is about the thickness of maybe a little bit more thicker than most thin-film bags. This is about .35 to .4 mils. Most of the thin-film bags are about .25 to, maybe some of them are .4. And we've, in this article, it's a 1-mil threshold. That's done for ease of enforcement so that we can readily see what the thickness of the bag is without having to go to a testing lab. You know, most trash bags are in the greater-than-1-mil thickness.
Also, the effective date, so if and when this, and when this bylaw is passed. When? General bylaw. It will be one year from the date on which it was approved by the Attorney General's Office. So any bylaw that's passed by our town at town meeting still has to pass the scrutiny of the Attorney General for accuracy, just generally, Mass General Law. But that would be one year, and we thought that would be fair to let, again, the larger stores are not gonna, not gonna take a year to do this. They'll be into this in a few months. It'll be the smaller stores that'll, that'll need that extra time. And there'll be an enforcement, so there will be people out there after a year enforcing this bylaw, and there will be fines that will go along with that. Initially, I'm sure there'll be warnings, not gonna fine somebody from the get-go, but there will be, we will strictly adhere to this law, this bylaw, and for the best of everyone. So I would like some closing statements from everyone, and just a little overview of what you, what you feel and how you feel you can contribute to this, this cause. Jamie?
Yeah, I'm happy to start. I think that Dartmouth as a green community is a community that says that, you know, we're willing to do something extra. We're willing to go that extra mile to make a difference for our citizens and for our futures, and this is the next logical step for us to be able to take. These plastic bags are our single-use items, they're largely not recycled. If they are tempted to be recycled, you know, it only gums up the works, they end up in our waterways, they end up in our sewer systems and clogging things up, so they're causing lots and lots of problems. So I don't want people to be comfortable with the idea that the status quo is okay. It's not. There's lots of problems that are existing from it, and with a simple change, one that we're already, many of us are accustomed to already, we're gonna have a small behavior change for a big impact, and I think that the community is ready for it.
That's quite true, yeah. Thank you. Mr. Alfons?
From the landfill operator's perspective, I think anytime we can get a single-use item out of the landfill, it's a benefit to the town. This is certainly a classic case, and let's hope that this is the beginning of a behavioral change for everyone. I think we all could stand to look at our own behavior, myself included, and see what we can do to help reduce the amount of waste that gets generated in our town, and this is certainly a good step. Plastic doesn't really go anywhere in the environment, it doesn't, it may break down into smaller pieces, but it doesn't degrade. And one of the benefits of having a landfill is that we can capture gas, which we do at Crapo Hill Landfill, and use that gas--
As a system.
Yeah, to generate electricity. Unfortunately, plastic doesn't contribute to that degradation, and in some cases, it actually may hinder. So we're all for a plastic bag ban.
Responsibility, I guess it's called.
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
When you think of it, retailers are trying to make these bags thinner, less useful, so what are they forced to do? Use more because it doesn't hold anything. So we've shot ourselves in the foot because it needs to save in cost and being more efficient. I think we definitely use more bags because they just don't hold it. I think that the final comment I keep thinking about is how well this town did with recyclables from day one. It was a fantastic success, and there's no reason to do it. And I am happy to be part of a retail concept that can build a program that works and share it with others who are interested, so I think it's gonna be great. I'm really excited about it, positive, and we just have to work hard to make sure the town meeting members are well-informed with all the information they need to make an informed vote. If they don't, then it's our responsibility because we need to let them know that what the details are, how it's gonna work, and why we're doing it, and then they can vote properly. And that's our, that's our job.
Thank you. Ms. Hawthorne?
So the mission of the zoo really is to make sure that we're communicating and educating our visitors about what's important, not only for wildlife, but for our future generations, and it really is our responsibility to make sure that we're, making sure the landfill is not filled by the time our children and grandchildren inherit it. The three Rs is a really important message that we get across, and what we're always reminding people is, the one that's always most forgotten is reduce. So reduce, reuse, recycle. Recycle shouldn't be your first thing that you do. Really, the first thing we want visitors to look at is reducing their single-use items. The average grocery bag is used for about 12 minutes, and then it's just, it's done. It's done its job. We use over 12 million barrels of oil to make these things every year, and so there's just a lot of resources that go into these. And so if we can get people to just look at those single-use items like plastic bags and figure out how to reduce them before they end up in our landfills, in our waterways, in our recycle streams, the better we'll be as a society. And so we're excited to partner with the town of Dartmouth, which is already leading the way in a lot of green initiatives, and we hope that we see this happening across the South Coast.
And we do take it serious.
Yeah.
We do. Mr. Micho?
So one thing that I, we didn't touch upon that I really wanna just mention first is that you're not gonna be walking out of the store if you don't have a reusable bag with an armload of product. There's nothing to stop the retailer from providing a paper bag. So that's the first. There are some communities that did outright bag bans, but this does not ban the use of paper. But really, just to kind of take off of what Scott said, you know, we do have an interest as a society, as a community, to manage our solid waste. You know, we are growing in population, yet our solid waste capacity is diminishing in Massachusetts. And, you know, when we're diverting compostables to compost sites and creating larger volumes of solid waste out of very negligible amounts of plastic, that's concerning because that material has to go somewhere, and that's gonna be back to our landfills, and filling it up with plastics that shouldn't have been there, and if we can get those plastics out of the compostables, then we'll have more usable compost in the end. It all fits into the, you know, the management of the solid waste. We have a solid waste issue in this state, in my opinion, for the generations ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your participation. Hopefully, the 10 million people that watch this, DCTV, will have an awful lot to talk about. So-- So that'll do it for another program of Your Town. Stanley Mickelson saying, we'll see you next time.